Good evening, everyone. I am calling the St. Louis County Council meeting to order Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. The hour is 6:30. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Donaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Webb?
He's muted.
Are you on mute?
No, we cannot hear you.
I can hear her through the wall.
I don't think that counts, Councilwoman Clancy.
Should I put my speaker to the wall?
Okay. Um, no, we can't. Um, let's move on. We see that she is here, so we can move on with the roll call. While she's working on her problem.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Councilmember Harder has indicated that he will not be present this evening. Um, the voting order this evening will be A. Days, Donaway, Fitch, Webb, Clancy, Tracus, and Harder. I will entertain a motion for the approval of the Journal of April 27, 2021. Uh, is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 No, motion carries. The April 27 Journal is approved. The May 4th, 2021 Journal has not been finalized yet. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to other communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we will move to road and bridge matters. Under Road and Bridge Matters, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. That will also be the same motion for number two. Item number two.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye. Yeah, Councilman Fitch, I can't hear you very well. You need to tune up your volume a little bit.
Okay, can you hear me now?
A little louder.
Let me try. How about now?
Better, much better.
Okay.
Okay, if that was a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
Item number four, 4th District.
Nope, we cannot hear you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I take an extra pair of headphones to her?
Yes, please do. Yeah, we'll pause for a second, please do.
Give me one moment.
Thank you.
Maybe resume, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Soon as Diane gets back in, we'll go on to item number four.
Yes, ma'am. Item number four, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the change of management office be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion carries.
Item number five, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion carries.
Item number six, 6th District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number seven, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the counselor be directed to the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number nine.
So ordered.
Item number 10, 7th District.
I'd like to take that up. Receive, file, refer to the county executive.
So ordered.
One moment, Madam Chair. Thank you. Item number 11.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to number 12 as well, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 14.
Please hold on the order of business.
Do you want to receive, file, and hold on the order of business, Madam Chair?
No, just hold on the order of business.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to add-ons, Madam Chair. Item number one, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 7th District.
I'll take that up for Councilman Harder. Receive, file, refer to the policy director.
So ordered.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. Moving on to public forum. How many speakers do we have this evening?
We have eight speakers this evening.
Right, when your name is announced, please listen for the clerk to ask you to begin speaking. Give us your first and last name and your zip code for the record. The clerk will give you a hint when you are three minutes or about up. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening is Kelly McGowan, followed by Shannon Robinson.
Madam Clerk, Kelly McGowan's with us. For some reason, it's not letting me move her up, but I can unmute her. So I'll do that, and then she can start.
Okay.
So I'm Kelly McGowan, and my zip code is 63108. Good evening. I'm speaking as a health equity advocate and the Director of Built Environment Advocacy for the entity EVOL, which is an acronym for Elevating Voices of Leaders Buying for Equity. In this role, I work alongside the community, making sure they are included in the processes that shape how their communities are designed. Last summer, this legislative body passed over this rule, creating racism a public crisis and supporting equitable policies that prioritize the health of all people, especially African Americans. This is a great question, but how does this translate into action that truly makes an impact? One pressing issue for North County residents is the overabundance of liquor stores in their communities. This is not unique to North County. Other predominantly black communities tend to be overrun with liquor stores throughout the country and is referred to as "liquor-lining." This is problematic because research shows alcohol outlet density is the single greatest predictor of violent crime, greater than other social or economic factors. EVOL is working to improve life expectancy among Black St. Louisans. When North County thrives, St. Louis County wins. Having communities overrun with liquor and convenience stores is not part of this criminal strategy. Councilwomen Clancy, Days, and Webb have spoken to us about this topic, and I greatly appreciate them for hearing our concerns. However, it is imperative that the St. Louis County Council backs their words with action by ensuring liquor store density is monitored and taken into consideration prior to the issuing of new liquor licenses. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and hope we can collaborate to make this happen.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shannon Robinson, followed by John Durhaki.
Shannon Robinson, 63025. I'm encouraged by the Attorney General's lawsuit that was filed today because maybe for once, the county, Dr. Page and Dr. Khan, will have to answer the questions and frustrations that we, the citizens, have been trying to get answered for so long. Concerns about the restrictions, asking for an explanation and scientific proof for the continued extreme restrictions of the fundamental freedoms of the St. Louis County citizens. We asked these questions months ago of Dr. Page, and you could not answer. Attorney General Eric Schmidt asked this in April, and it seemed you didn't answer it then either. If you had the science to back up your answer, you would prove it, but the fact is, you do not have it. You aren't relying on science, Dr. Page. All you and Dr. Khan and those that preceded him kept saying as we are following the science, but you haven't given us any real data to back up the Department of Health's mandates. It not only is clear to St. Louis County citizens, but to the AG, that your blatant inconsistencies offer further proof that this is about control and not science. Going further, I urge the council to demand that the Department of Public Health to show you the reasons why they are suggesting recommendations at this point in time. Because if we are being honest, you are the ones that should be making any and all mandates. They should be simply recommending them to you. Early on, we did not have any data to support any science. We weren't sure how this virus would work. This is not March 2020, it's May 2021, and we are 15 months into this. We have data to prove one way or another on every single arguable issue. No more blatant excuses. We are the "show me" state, and you need to show me before anyone places any more restrictions on my family and before we alter our lives any more than we already have over the last 15 months. The last item. Yesterday, St. Charles County, which is also a charter government like us, made a statement during their county council meeting. "The County Department of Health has no authority to tell school districts what to do, and instead insists those decisions must be left to the political subdivision, that is, the school district itself." St. Charles County is subject to the same state laws that Sam Page claims gives his health director the right to issue whatever laws he wants without a vote of the elected body. The St. Louis County Charter is even more strict about it than St. Charles Charter. Section 4.130 of the St. Louis County Charter specifically lays out the role of the Director of the Department of Health for St. Louis County is supposed to do, and he only has the authority to recommend to the county council policies to protect public health, not issue orders. St. Louis County Ordinance 602.020, Section 3, says that rules and regulations must be approved by the county council, yet Sam Page and his Director of Health insist that they, and they alone, with the no oversight of an elected body, have the right to control our lives. This is being challenged right now in a lawsuit in Jeff City, and it unfortunately takes a long time to get a decision. So why doesn't Sam Page just stop right now and do what St. Charles did? Parents are getting fed up. It is clear in St. Charles, they understand the law, and the schools can decide what protocols to put in place. It is time to follow the law and do the same here. Let the school districts decide for themselves what is best for their students. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joe Durhaki, followed by Donna Slimmer.
Uh, my comments are very simple. Um, I echo Shannon. Uh, we've become friends. My main question is, why are we still having virtual council meetings? When we're, when we know so much more than we did, uh, a year ago? This is ridiculous. Okay? There's no reason for this to continue. There's enslavement of our children going on. It's very simple. This is a power grab. Um, the St. Louis County Charter has no authority over the school districts. None. Yet, they claim to, and all of the boards point to the mandates of the county charter. The citizens are unhappy with the county government. And with your repeated efforts to stick your boot heel on our necks, we have no choice but to come after you guys, and we're using the state government, and we're organized. Um, so do you guys have a choice? All right? You have a very unhappy populace. We are spending our money in Jeffco and St. Charles County. So, you know, you decide. You decide where the money is going to come from. Is it going to come from that sweet, sweet, you know, COVID relief fund? Or is it going to come from your hardworking taxpayers and the people that are your constituents themselves? That's it.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Donna Slimmer, followed by Katie Berry.
Good evening, um, Council, Donna Slimmer, 63114. I can't thank you enough for the meeting this past Friday regarding St. Louis County Animal Care and Control. And while I remain, I will remain patient for progress, as you asked, I'm compelled to comment on some things in that meeting that didn't go unnoticed by myself and other concerned citizens. First, the fact that Spring Schmidt left the meeting not even 10 or 15 minutes in wasn't surprising, as this seems to be something she does regularly. Secondly, Acting Director Khan turning off his video during both sets of public comments was not only rude and disrespectful, it was also very telling in that it shows just how much he cares about the concerns of the public. Has he forgotten he works for us? Dr. Khan falsely accused the public of telling lies on social media regarding the shelter. Maybe if he spent some time there, he would know that every accusation is true and came directly from the staff that sees what's going on. Oh, I guess me spelling that will get more of them unfairly fired or harassed by management for speaking up for themselves and the animals. What Dr. Khan failed to mention in his irrelevant PowerPoint presentation was that the contracted veterinarian, Dr. Wangenek, also known in the St. Louis rescue world as Dr. Death, is a colleague of Dr. Durst's husband. Maybe that is our answer on why the veterinarian vacancies have not been filled. Filling those vacancies would mean Dr. Death, Vanessa's husband's coworker slash friend, loses his high-paying taxpayer-paid contract with county where he spends six to eight hours a week. Please let that sink in, Council. It's pretty shady, if you ask me. Dr. Khan needs to go. And then Dr. Khan stated the heart-stick method of euthanasia being used by Dr. Death is only used after the animals are sedated. How does he know this to be true? Has he been present, or is this what he has been told by Dr. Death? I know someone that has been there and said they are not sedated, and I quote, "They are held against a cold, hard floor and always have seizures," unquote. If they are heavily sedated, why would they need to be held against the floor? Hardly a humane way, isn't it? But remember, they lose their job when they speak out, and Dr. Death would lose his high-paying job if he admitted the animals are not fully sedated, wouldn't he? Because per the American Veterinary Medical Association, intracardiac injection, also known as heart-stick, is only allowed on heavily sedated animals, heavily sedated, as in unconscious, as in not moving. Thank you again, Councilwomen Days and Webb, for the meeting on Friday and your attention regarding these matters.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Katie Berry as our next speaker, followed by Sue Erby.
Hi. Hi, Councilmember. My name is Katie Berry, and I am the 2021 President-elect of St. Louis Realtors. We Realtors have been vocal advocates for rental assistance during COVID at the local, state, and federal levels. We believe-
Ma'am, we can't hear you. Miss Berry? We cannot hear you.
I believe she has a connection issue because she's not showing muted here.
Move to another room. Now can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Sorry for the panic. Okay. Um, so I don't know where I can-
We can't hear you now.
Let me see. I'm moving my location. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Is this better? Okay, sorry.
Diane, would you restart her clock, please?
I did, I did, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, my name is Katie Berry, and I am the 2021 President-elect of St. Louis Realtors. We Realtors have been vocal advocates for rental assistance during COVID at the local, state, and federal levels. We believe the best policy solution for all parties is rental assistance to cover the rent, taxes, and utility bills for tenants struggling during the pandemic. Rental assistance prevents two crises. One for tenants and one for mom-and-pop housing providers who do not have a reprieve from their bills. On behalf of the 8,000 members of St. Louis Realtors, I first want to thank the council for quickly accepting the first round of federal funds to stand up to the emergency rental, or to stand up the emergency rental assistance program. Our ask today is for the council to quickly accept the latest federal emergency rental assistance funds coming from the American Rescue Plan Act. We Realtors, we as Realtors, know the importance of homes, and we're working to spread the word quickly about the new ERAP program in order to help renters and housing providers alike. For example, on March 24th, we held a webinar on St. Louis-area rental assistance for housing providers. And we have continued to push out rental assistance information to our members. The faster this money is deployed to help tenants and housing providers, the better. I ask county, continue moving with as much speed as possible to get that rental assistance delivered to those that need it in order to keep people in their homes. Thank you for this, your time this evening, and I'm sorry for technical difficulties.
Thank you, Miss Berry. Our next speaker is Sue Erby, followed by Suzanne Burley. Miss Erby?
She's showing unmuted in my end.
Miss Erby? Do you want me to move on?
Let's reach out to her, um, Diane, please.
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Suzanne Burley, followed by Zachary Keys.
Good evening, Suzanne Burley, 63123. I want to start out tonight with a compliment for all seven of the members of the council. Um, the working meeting that you all had just a couple weeks ago should not go without a comment of a job well done. Uh, seeing you all collaborate together was really quite refreshing. And just like Miss Webb said, that is my world too. I'm fortunate to work for a company that encourages collaboration. Um, I know the council has been subjected to a lot this past year and a half, including toxic leadership that has pitted you guys against each other. Um, so I really hope to see more meetings in which you are able to collaborate together without the toxic environment and the pressure to carry out someone else's agenda. So job well done on that meeting. I was very pleased to hear about the lawsuit against Sam Page, Phasal Khan, and DPH today. My concern is, who's going to foot that bill for their legal counsel? The county taxpayers have spent more than enough on legal fees for Sam Page and his lawsuits. I hope the council is able to block Page from spending more of our dollars for his defense. I want to personally thank Miss Days and Miss Webb for holding the hearing for county animal control. I really appreciate the attention to detail and effort invested by you both in caring for the animals of St. Louis County. I fully intend to respect your request for patience and grace. As many on the call can attest to, the misdirected anger towards the public from Dr. Khan is the reality of his negligence to educate himself as to the atrocities at county animal control. Dr. Khan's 35-minute PowerPoint presentation was based on outdated information and statistics. It lacked any information that addressed the concerns of the community and in fact, further divided the community in animal control by placing blame on the citizens for their involvement with caring about the animals. It was obvious that Dr. Khan did not have firsthand knowledge and based his information on hearsay from the very leadership that's in question. I fully support and recommend that leadership changes are needed quickly for our animal community. And please take note, we are not hearing any opposition from the employees or volunteers from the facility that are disagreeing with everything that we're saying. They fear retaliation. That is why. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Our final speaker this evening is Zachary Keys.
Uh, I'm told that St. Louis County Council is revamping the public auditorium when we will no longer be doing what we're currently doing. My question is, how is those configurations being put out for bid? Are minority contractors invited to do some of their reconfiguration? Of, because Zachary Keys runs a COVID-19 task force. I'd like to be invited to bidding on some of the work that government has in place this very moment. I feel systemic racism plays a great part in your choices in selecting contractors as well as developers. In my neighborhood, let me reiterate one thing. I'm in the 63034 zip code. That would be, uh, Shalonda Webb's. But again, how are we, as minority, being invited to the bidding process on some of this work? Two, the government monies that's recently been put out, who's in control of that money? That Mr. Biden also put a strong gift on minority businesses and rooting out systemic racism that's played by government and private entities. And my final question would be, how did Sam Page spend that last stimulus money? And how can we track the spending of it? Well, I feel a lot of it's been spent on a lot of self-serving interests. I'll do better next week. I'm not going anywhere.
Thank you, sir.
Was I heard?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that is all the speakers this evening.
Thank you very much to all of you who have taken the time out to, uh, express your concerns and, uh, with us, we do appreciate that. Uh, hopefully, we will be able to get back in the chamber sooner rather than later and perhaps not have the technical difficulties that we face this evening. Believe me, we are working toward that, and, uh, hopefully, we hope to have a surprise for you in early June. Don't hold me to that one. But anyway, thank you so kindly. We will move on to the, um, report of the county executive.
Good evening. Yesterday at St. Mary's Hospital-
Yesterday at St. Mary's Hospital, I joined other doctors and medical professionals to honor healthcare workers, true heroes during this pandemic. Some of our largest employers in the St. Louis region are our hospital systems, and through their collective efforts, they have saved lives and provided critical care to the very sick during this pandemic. We've seen their commitment to helping others shine through during some very dark moments. We also held a moment of silence to honor those lives lost to this deadly virus. In St. Louis County, 2,204 of our residents died from COVID-19. Across the country, that number is a staggering 581,000. Thanks to vaccinations, we are seeing fewer deaths and a decrease in the number of COVID cases. We are moving in the right direction thanks to the overwhelming support of our residents and businesses in following public health protocols. Last week, I toured Pfizer St. Louis County campus and met some of the talented men and women who developed the life-saving vaccine. The pandemic has taken the lives and livelihoods of many of our residents. It spread through our communities quickly and changed the way we live, work, and move about every day. A year ago, it was hard to imagine a vaccine could be developed, approved, and become widely available. But thanks to the talented teams at Pfizer, that's exactly where we are today: investing in science, investing in technology, investing in what is possible. We leaned on the best and the brightest in St. Louis County, and the talented employees at Pfizer delivered. From all of us in St. Louis County, thank you Pfizer. We're proud to have you as a neighbor, as a leader, as a partner in fighting this pandemic. Vaccine is saving lives and allowing us to focus on building our economy, getting workers back into office, and children back in the classroom. Thanks to you, the new normal is within reach. Finally, I'd like to thank the Missouri Legislature for passing a bill today that creates a statewide prescription drug monitoring program. This has been a long time coming. As a county council member, I successfully led the efforts in April of 2017 to begin the county's prescription drug monitoring program. We are committed to addressing this public health emergency. Today, 75 jurisdictions have passed legislation to participate in the St. Louis County PDMP. It covers 85% of Missouri's population and 94% of healthcare providers. Missouri is the only state with a statewide PDMP program. I strongly encourage Governor Parsons to sign this bill into law. A special thank you to State Senator Holly Reader for working so hard on this legislation in Jefferson City. As a medical doctor, I understand how this program helps save lives. Our Department of Public Health provides free Narcan in its clinics and is now providing the bio- by-mail option to ensure equitable access. For more information about how to receive an Narcan kit, call 615-8233. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to introduction of bills.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under, um, introduction of bills, uh, if Kevin's going to read those, I'd like to take up Bill Number 10 for Councilman Harder for introduction. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, proceeding with introduction, Madam Chair. Bill Number 132, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance transferring a total sum of $549,481 from the Department of Information Technology by transferring $320,854 to the Department of Administration and transferring $228,627 to the unappropriated balance of the General Revenue Fund. Bill Number 133, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the 21st Judicial Circuit to provide website hosting services, appropriating funds received as compensation for providing said services, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Information Technology to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 134, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract in subsequent renewals with Starfire Corporation for fireworks displays at the J.D. Blas. Bill Number 135, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance amending ordinance number 27,762 pertaining to grants from the Office of National Drug Control Policy. Bill Number 136, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Washington University in St. Louis to provide sexually transmitted infection treatment services for the Department of Public Health. Bill Number 137, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract for one year and up to nine annual subsequent renewals with Crestwood Square Associates LP for lease of office space at Crestwood Square Shopping Center for the St. Louis County Assessor. Bill Number 138, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance in the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the C2 Shopping District and the C8 Plan Commercial District and approving the application and preliminary plans for the development in the C8 Plan Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions. PC 03-21 Dan Wagner. Bill Number 139, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept funds in an amount up to $1,486,079 upon receipt pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and appropriating said funds to accounts of the Department of Justice Services in support of a $2 per hour pay increase for certain job classes, subject to approval of the pay increase by the Civil Service Commission. Bill Number 140, introduced by Councilmember Days, an emergency ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept an emergency rental assistance grant in an amount up to $29,864,463.40 from the United States Department of the Treasury, appropriating said grant funds for support of a Housing Stability Assistance and Services Program, authorizing the county executive and the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary documents and declaring an emergency.
Um, I would like to move at this time to invoke Rule 19 to suspend Rule 6 in order to advance Bill Number 140 to perfection order of business. Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
All in favor, please say aye. Uh, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you read the bill? Uh, Mr. Clerk? Which one? Okay.
Bill Number 140, introduced by Councilmember Days, an emergency ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept an emergency rental assistance grant in an amount up to $29,864,463.40 from the United States Department of the Treasury, appropriating said grant funds for support of a Housing Stability Assistance and Services Program, authorizing the county executive and the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary documents and declaring an emergency.
Uh, for the benefit of those in the audience, the- this will be additional funds uh, for our rental assistance. Uh, we had, uh, Ms. Katie Berry, and we also received a letter from, um, Troy Hinderleider regarding the importance of getting this money to the people who are most in need. And that's why we are moving this bill forward. Uh, we will not be able to take it through final passage because we are missing a member. So we will go as far as we can this evening and then pick the bill up for final passage in a subsequent meeting. So with that, I move, uh, to take up Bill 140 for perfection. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 140 is perfected. And if I am correct, um, Madam Clerk, that is as far as we can go this evening.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Kevin, please continue.
Proceeding with introduction, Madam Chair. Bill Number 141, introduced by Councilmember Fitch for Harder, an ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Gateway Studios LLC Project Series 2021, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $130 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the county executive to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Moving on to perfection.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Check that out for Councilman Harder. I move to hold Bill 20.
Bill Number 20 is held.
Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Bill Number 32.
Bill Number 32 is held.
Bill Number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill 266 is held.
Bill Number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill 267 is held.
Bill Number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Bill Number 75.
Bill Number 75 is held.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 77.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 77 is held.
Bill Number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill 88.
Bill 88 is held.
Bill Number 124, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number 124. Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 124 is perfected.
Bill Number 125, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number 125. Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 125 is perfected.
Bill Number 126, introduced by Council-
Did you finish? I didn't hear. I think you cut off there.
Uh, Bill Number 126, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number 126. Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 126 is perfected.
Bill Number 127, introduced by Councilmembers Days and Webb.
I move to perfect Bill Number 127. Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 127 is perfected.
Bill Number 128, introduced by Councilmembers Days, Dunaway, and Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 128. Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 128 is perfected.
Bill Number 129, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I move to perfect Bill Number 129.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 129 is perfected.
Bill Number 130, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I move to perfect Bill Number 130.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 130 is perfected.
Bill Number 131, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Um, this is my bill to establish a youth advisory council for St. Louis County. I think we can all agree that everything we do impacts our youth, and we need to do a better job of bringing young people to the table. Um, I am going to hold this bill this week, and I invite council members to let me know if they have any questions about the bill or would like to move forward on it next week. So with that, I move to hold Bill Number 131.
Bill Number 131 is held. Moving on to final passage.
Bill Number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill Number 320.
Bill Number 320 is held.
Bill Number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill Number 14, please.
Bill Number 14 is held.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Um, this is a bill. At 4:30 on this case legislation, what this legislation would do was, would be, if passed, invite Missouri stupid and unincorporated St. Louis County. There's been a good deal of, um, controversy in pace in general. Everyone Tuesday to learn more about a page program works in St. Louis County and a state jury, and hopefully get to what it looks like here. I tell them, I need to hold Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 76.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 76 is held.
Bill Number 220, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I move to hold Bill Number 220.
Bill Number 220 is held.
Bill Number 119, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill 119.
Is there a second?
Second, Trachis.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number 119, you have six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 119 is finally passed.
Bill Number 120, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move a final passage of Bill Number 120. Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number 120, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 120 is finally passed.
Bill Number 121, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move a final passage of Bill Number 121. Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number 121, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 121 is finally passed.
Bill Number 122, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move a final passage of Bill Number 122. Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number 122, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 122 is finally passed.
Bill Number 123, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move a final passage of Bill Number 123. Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number 123, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 123 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have five resolutions this evening. Resolution Number 1, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Christine Buggnitz has devoted her life as a physical education teacher for children ages 3 through 12 at community school for the past 33 years, am I right? Ms. Buggnitz has committed- Yes ma'am. Resolution, whereas Christine Buggnitz has devoted her life as a physical education teacher for children ages three through twelve at community school for the past thirty-three years, Emoraz Miss Buggnitz has committed to ensuring her students grow physically, emotionally, socially, and intellectually. Emoraz Miss Buggnitz developed a physical education program that focuses on lifetime fitness rather than sports development in order to help all children experience success and move their bodies in healthy ways. Emoraz Miss Buggnitz reaches the entire population of the community school through drumming activities that boost brain power, develop competence, reduce stress, help motor skill development, aid in self-expression, create new friendships, and allow children to be in the present moment. Emoraz Miss Buggnitz has brought the community school forward in mindfulness activities through visualization, meditation, and walking the labyrinth. Emoraz Miss Buggnitz has worked to increase inclusivity and belonging among students of varied religions, races, and socioeconomic statuses. Emoraz Miss Buggnitz developed a morning program designed to meet the needs of children with sensory integration challenges that help participants prepare to have a successful day. Emoraz Miss Buggnitz is a loved and respected member of the community school faculty. Emoraz Miss Buggnitz has also served as the head coach of the Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams and assistant track and field coach at John Burroughs School since nineteen ninety-five. Emoraz Miss Buggnitz will retire at the end of this school year and will be honored at a ceremony on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Emoraz, henceforth, the community school will celebrate Christine Buggnitz Day each year on April twenty-second in conjunction with Earth Day, and each student will take a walk or write a poem in her honor. Emoraz, when an educator has been so dedicated to the realization of the full potential of each of her students, it is appropriate for the council and the community to pause and take note. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council expresses its deepest appreciation to Christine Buggnitz for her dedication as an educator of young people in Saint Louis County, in which there are many years of adventures and good times with family and friends. Section two, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution as Christine Buggnitz as a permanent token of the council's esteem.
Thank you, Kevin, and, um, thank you, Miss Buggnitz, for your many years of service to children in our community. We wish you the best in your retirement. With that, I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are six ayes and one absent.
Thank you. Resolution number one, uh, the motion carries. It is adopted.
Resolution number two this evening, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, this resolution is for the, uh, retiring mayor of Town and Country, John Dalton. Many of you probably know, he's one of the longest-serving mayors in Saint Louis County, and after sixteen years, he's going to hang it up. So Kevin, if I could just get you to read the first two paragraphs, and then the last whereas and from there forward. There's a lot on here.
Yes, sir. Resolution, whereas Jonathan Dalton was first elected to the Town and Country, the city Board of Aldermen, to serve the residents of Ward One in two thousand and four, was elected mayor in two thousand and five, and has served faithfully for an unprecedented four terms, making him the longest-serving mayor in the history of the city. And whereas, throughout his tenure, Mayor Dalton committed himself to the mission of the city to, quote, "maintain a hospitable environment for its residents and other stakeholders and to foster a sense of community," end quote. And whereas, when an individual has devoted so much of his life to public service, it is appropriate for the council and all Saint Louis Countyans to pause and take note. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council expresses its deepest appreciation to Jonathan Dalton for his many years of service and exemplary leadership, and wishes him the very best in all of his future endeavors. Section two, the administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to the honorable Jonathan Dalton as a permanent token of the council's gratitude and esteem.
Thank you, Kevin, and I'll have an opportunity to present this to Mayor Dalton on the next week at a ceremony, so I move for the adoption of resolution number two.
Is there a second?
Second, Tracus.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are six ayes and one absent.
Motion carries. Resolution number two is adopted.
Resolution number three this evening, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please read the resolution, Kevin.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas, May is National Mental Health Awareness Month, a month in which we recognize the importance of mental health of all people of all ages, excuse me, people of all ages, and work to reduce the stigma around mental health issues. And whereas, the mental health of our community has been profoundly impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic and the economic and personal disruption it has caused. And whereas, the CDC reports that one in four adults experienced symptoms of anxiety or depression in February twenty-twenty-one. And whereas, Mental Health America ranked the state of Missouri forty-fourth out of fifty for its high prevalence of mental illness and low access to mental health care. And whereas, nearly ten percent of youth have reported severe depression, and nationally, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for young people, with disproportionately higher rates for Black, LGBTQ-plus, and transgender youth. And whereas, the county council has heard heartfelt, often tearful, comments from anguished parents whose children are suffering greatly during this historically challenging time. And whereas, a significant portion of the American Rescue Plan increases investment in school-based mental health professionals, substance use, and mental health care block grants, especially for underserved communities, as well as in support for certified community behavioral health clinics to expand access to high-quality, evidence-based behavioral health services. And whereas, throughout the pandemic, the Saint Louis County Department of Public Health has partnered with the United Way and Behavioral Health Services to provide a two-one-one mental health initiative, which has been used by over thirty-four hundred individuals to obtain immediate help, and has dedicated over two million dollars of CARES Act funding to mental health and substance abuse services in underserved communities. And whereas, for our community to fully recover, it must recover in both the body and mind, and we must dedicate the resources needed to foster that recovery and treat the mental health crisis facing our community as the public health crisis it is. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the council hereby recognizes the month of May as National Mental Health Awareness Month, which provides us with the opportunity to increase awareness of and decrease the stigma around mental health issues. Section two, the council commits to continuing to dedicate resources to and partnering with agencies across the region that provide support for mental health.
Thank you. I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number three. Did I get that number right?
Yes, yes. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Discussion. Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to, and of course, I'm going to support this, just like to add a few things that I wish would have been in here. I was at a luncheon today at a Chamber of Commerce, uh, meeting where we had a physician speak about the effects on the youth in our community because of the pandemic, um, and I wish it would have addressed, uh, the resolution, how the mandates implemented by Saint Louis County have affected, uh, the mental health of especially of our kids in the community, and didn't mention that. The other thing that I wanted to mention in here is, it says that we spent about two million dollars on mental health services out of the hundred and seventy-three point five million that was given to the county, uh, under the CARES Act. So two million out of a hundred and seventy-three point five million, I think is pretty small, uh, especially when you look at some of the other ways we spent this CARES Act funding, over three million just for two consultants out of Boston. So I absolutely support the mental health community, been working with them for, well, now almost forty years, uh, so I will support this, but I felt like I needed to mention those two things. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Um, yes, I'd like to respond to that.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yeah, I don't, uh, Councilman Fitch, I don't think we need to agree on the cause here to agree that this is a problem in our community right now, and I'm eager to hear that you, it sounds like, are ready to dedicate more resources to this problem with our kind, um, federal money, so I appreciate that. And, um, you know, what I've said all along is that the enemy in this, the predator, if you will, is not the shutdowns, it's not the restrictions, it's the virus itself. Um, so I appreciate your support on this, and I respect that we have a different opinion, but, but let's center the people that this is affecting right now, and again, commit to dedicating more resources to it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Fitch.
Just a follow-up, um, you know, while I absolutely will support additional funding, uh, it would have been nice to have input back when we had the hundred and seventy-three point five million dollars in front of us to make sure more money went for mental health services, but we didn't get that opportunity. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, hold.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. Uh, just a point of clarification, I agree with Councilman Fitch, it would have been nice for the council to have more oversight, um, but the council has itself to blame for the lack of that oversight or the lack of that authority to appropriate funds, and through that process, significant and substantive oversight of how the money is spent. So I just thought for the record that needed to be, uh, pointed out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Councilwoman Days.
Councilwoman Cl- Councilwoman Clancy, you have the floor.
Yeah, you know, Councilman Fitch never misses an opportunity to go back to the past year and everything that he thinks should have happened differently, and Councilman Days can, or Councilman Fitch, I'm sorry, can, um, I hope also share that every week during this pandemic, I made the point to pick up the phone and call every single council member to talk about the agenda, to talk to them about what they would like to see on the agenda, what their priorities were, and I believe, even though that didn't happen in the same public forum that it is happening, that's happened in other ways, that is something that is also true, and I would like to point out, um, we moved very quickly because we had to last year to spend the relief money. We were in the middle of a crisis. We're in a very different opportunity now, um, and I take it that Councilman Fitch is very frustrated still about that. Um, it sounds like we're all able to move forward together and work together this year in a different way than, um, than happened last year, even though there were efforts underway to do that, it got very political, but, you know, I felt the need to respond to that, and I'm disappointed that this resolution about Mental Health Awareness Month has kind of turned into a political back and forth. So, anyway, I again repeat my call to adopt resolution number three.
Is there any further discussion? It is removed, and second, roll call, please.
You're muted.
For me? No. My hand is on mute.
Councilmember Days, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on resolution number three, there are six ayes and one absent.
Motion carries. Resolution number three is adopted.
Resolution number four this evening, introduced by Councilmembers Days, Dunaway, and Webb.
Kevin, please read the, uh, resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas, on May fourteen, twenty-twenty-one, friends and family will join together in warmth and admiration to celebrate the life of Viola J. Murphy. And whereas, as a lifelong and dedicated public servant, Mayor Viola Murphy exemplified selflessness in all her actions and deeds in her service to Saint Louis County residents as an educator in the Ferguson-Florissant School District and an alderwoman and mayor in Cool Valley. And whereas, Mayor Viola Murphy, in her graceful and humble way, shepherded policies that would improve the conditions and outcomes of her community, advocating until she was the last woman standing. And whereas, Mayor Viola Murphy believed it took a village to train the next generation of leaders, and so she chose to mentor African-American women, always offering pearls of wisdom and strength when facing adversity. And whereas, Mayor Viola Murphy, never backing down, courageously fought for parity and equity for the African-American community in Saint Louis County. And whereas, Mayor Murphy was dedicated to ensuring that all Saint Louis Countyans are treated fairly, and that small Saint Louis County municipalities such as Cool Valley not be overlooked or underestimated, as demonstrated by her efforts against certain municipal court reform in her fight for the integrity of the local chapter of the NAACP. And whereas, Mayor Murphy's professional and political impact will be felt by generations of families to come. And whereas, it is appropriate for the council and all Saint Louis Countyans to pause to honor a life well-lived by a woman so devoted to community, education, and the well-being of others. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council offers deepest condolences to the family and friends of Mayor Viola J. Murphy. Section two, the administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to the city of Cool Valley and to her beloved family as a token of the council's esteem and admiration for a life well-lived.
Thank you so very much, Kevin, and, um, yeah, we regret the death of, uh, Mayor Murphy. She really championed, uh, Cool Valley, I will tell you. She stood with, uh, the Florists and the Hazel Woods, and, and you'd have thought her city was just as big as theirs, because it was in her eyesight, it really was. So I will be presenting, uh, this resolution at the services which we held on Friday, so I, I do appreciate, um, the co-sponsors that are with me, and with that, I move for the adoption of resolution number four. Is there a second?
Second.
Clancy.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on resolution number four, there are six ayes and one absent.
Motion carries. Resolution number four is adopted.
Our final resolution this evening, Madam Chair, resolution number five, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Clancy.
Thank you, Kevin. Would you please read the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas, on March sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, the Center for Policing Equity, CPE, presented the Saint Louis County Police Department National Justice Database City Report to the Board of Police Commissioners. And whereas, the report resulted from CPE's partnership with the Department of Police, the department, to conduct an analysis of the department's policing practices from twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen. And whereas, the purpose of the analysis was to determine whether some racial groups in Saint Louis County experienced more frequent police contact than other groups, identifying, identify factors that contribute to existing racial disparities, and the extent to which these factors can be influenced by the department, and provide recommendations for action the department can take to address any identified disparities. And whereas, in the report, CPE recommended ten action steps to enhance the department's commitment to fair and equitable policing, and some of the key recommended steps are as follows. Require officers to collect all of the data elements for pedestrian stops identified by CPE's The National Justice Database Analytical Framework, as the department does not currently collect data on pedestrian stops, and it is important to collect and analyze data on all stops, vehicular and pedestrian, to get a full understanding of departmental stop practice. Barely define reportable force and include any use of force incidents, including pointing a firearm beyond hand control or escort techniques that do not result in injury or complaint of injury, and that are not used to overcome resistance. Require supervisors to review vehicle stop reports in a timely fashion to ensure that their supervisees are completing them properly. Adopt a policy explicitly requiring officers to intervene if they see a fellow officer using excessive force. Build on and clarify the current policy prohibiting the use of chokeholds and neck restraints by defining the terms to include any maneuver that may inhibit breathing by compression of the airway in the neck, that may inhibit blood flow by compression of the blood vessels in the neck, or that applies pressure to the front, side, or back of the neck. Build on the current policy commended in the report, which warns of the risk of positional asphyxia, and prohibits the use of, quote, "hogtying," end quote, techniques by prohibiting officers from placing body weight on the back of a prone, restrained individual. Adopt a policy that prohibits officers from the use of deadly force unless other reasonable alternatives have been exhausted or would clearly be ineffective. Work with local LGBTQ-plus communities to implement numerous recommended po- policy changes as identified in the report. And whereas, the council member for the second council district has discussed the CPE report with Chief Mary Barton, Superintendent of Police, and is encouraged by inform- is, excuse me, and is encouraged by information provided- Superintendent of Police, and is encouraged by information provided by her regarding the manner in which the department has already implemented some of CPE's recommendations and is adopting others in a working strategy to address many additional short-term goals. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the County Council asserts that it should be the goal of all residents to improve community policing and appreciates the service CPE has provided in furtherance of that goal. The council further strongly encourages the Department of Police to continue to identify each of these recommendations as a short, intermediate, or long-term goal, determine where each fits in the department's strategic plan, and establish a reasonable timeline when each can be put into practice. Section Two, the Administrative Director shall send certified copies of this resolution to Chief Mary Barton, Superintendent of Police, and the Chair and members of the Board of Police Commissioners.
Thank you, Kevin. I move for the adoption of Resolution Number Five.
Is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
Discussion. Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, Councilwomen Dunaway and Clancy, for bringing this forward. Um, I had an opportunity to sign the first contract with CPE back in twenty-twelve. So that's how far back this study goes, is back to then. I realize I only did the study from sixteen to eighteen, but this is something that we had been trying to get in the police department, even that far back, almost ten years ago now. So I do appreciate the fact that Chief Barton has already addressed the vast majority of these things, uh, these items that you heard addressed there, uh, discussed there in the resolution. Uh, so I appreciate her doing that, and I know there's some loose ends that she needs to finish up. So I look forward to seeing those come to fruition. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Sing non. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hayes.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Resolution Number Five, there are six ayes and one absent.
Motion carries. Resolution Number Five is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business. Madam Chair, item number one.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Same for item number four, and that will be the order.
Item number five, Seventh District.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number six, Second District.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number seven.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, Fourth District.
Madam Chair, before I move, um, make my motion, I just want to make note of Ms. Kelly McGowan that came on from Evolve, and I am working with her and our organization as it pertains to liquor stores in District Four. District Four has the most liquor stores throughout all of the seven districts, and so I am very sensitive about, um, allowing or supporting new businesses for liquor licenses if they are just carryout box, uh, liquor licenses. For those that have a establishment with the restaurant or any other type of facility, I am supportive. I wanted to give that explanation before I carry forward with this business. At this time, the new liquor license be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries.
Item number nine, Sixth District.
The new liquor license be approved as requested, please.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose no, motion carries.
Item number ten.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Madam Chair, moving on to new business this evening, we have two prepared orders. Prepared order number one, in the matter of communication from Jennifer Keating, Acting Director of Procurement, and Todd A. Martin, Director of Administration, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second, Tracus.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose no, motion carries. Order number one is adopted.
Prepared order number two, in the matter of donation of office furniture.
I move for the adoption of order number two.
Is there a second?
Second, Tracus.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose no, motion carries. Order number two is adopted. All right, we're at the end of the agenda. Do we have any announcements or anything for the greater good? Any announcements or anything? Councilwoman Webb.
Madam Chair, I think Councilwoman Clancy here went up at the same time.
I'm sorry. Okay, you all want to flip a coin?
It's okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand. Thank you, um, uh, Councilwoman Clancy. I just want to remind everyone that District Four will be having a cleanup this Saturday, rain or shine, uh, throughout District Four, through the two-seventy corridor and also on three-sixty-seven. We will be getting started at eight-thirty. If you have not signed up, there are very limited spots, and I'm so grateful that, uh, my colleagues and other members of the of the Saint Louis County Government has joined me. So thank you all for your willingness to support me, even Councilwoman Clancy. I know in your condition, you're not going to be cleaning up, but thank you for your support and letting me know. But again, that's this Saturday, May fifteenth, starting at eight-thirty, and you can go on the website, uh, shalondaWeb dot com, or even our Facebook page, Councilwoman Shalonda Web, to sign up, uh, via signup genius. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, I will be there, Councilwoman Webb. Um, we'll see how long I last. I'll be there. Thank you for the opportunity. Hope to be joined by some folks from my district. Um, a week ago, I was commending the first responders in my district, particularly the fire departments, who showed up strong to respond to a chemical fire, and this week, I want to commend many of the fire departments in my district and beyond for showing up strong to, um, to, uh, respond to a bear, a black bear, that had given itself a tour of my district and made its way through many of the neighborhoods, um, near mine. Um, and so I want to thank especially the Clayton Fire Department and the Brentwood and Richmond Heights Fire Departments. Um, I believe the Missouri Department of Conservation was able to safely tranquilize the bear and return it to the wild, so, um, hopefully, that was good news for everyone, very good news that that was able to happen and no one was hurt. So thank you to the first responders who were involved.
Anyone else?
And, uh, Councilwoman Webb, I really appreciate your efforts with the trash and the cleanup. We will be having a committee as a whole on that because I, I think much of this is getting out of hand, and, uh, we need to make, we need to do what we need to do to stop the people from bumping and just trash, particularly in the first and the fourth, and I know it happens perhaps other places, but I think, uh, as reported in the, uh, on the news several, several times, that, uh, it has become a major problem in our district, so I do appreciate that. Anything else to come before the body at this particular time? Uh, need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose no, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Stay safe and have a good evening.
Good night.